Good evening and welcome to the Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce Meet the Candidate Forum. My name is Mary Claire Olson Potter, President of the Chamber, and I'm thrilled to welcome our candidates and our guests with us tonight. We have some great questions, and I am pleased to welcome our moderator tonight, who is Meg Heaton. She is a former reporter with the Hudson Star Observer. Welcome, Meg.
Thank you, Mary Claire. So it's a privilege to be able to moderate tonight's forum. I'd like to begin by thanking all of the candidates for their willingness to serve the city of Hudson by running for the seats on the City Council. Full disclosure, I do not live in the city, but have lived in the town of Hudson since 1989 and have covered the news of the city for 27 years with the former Hudson Star Observer. The candidates are seeking election to seats in District One, District Five, and District Six. A map of the council districts can be found on the city's website at hudsonwi.gov. The site also has a complete listing of all the polling places in the city. This 90-minute forum will begin tonight with a brief introduction of our six candidates. Then that will be followed by two-minute opening statement from each of them. The candidates will then have two minutes each to respond to four questions previously provided to them. With the remaining time, the candidates will answer submitted questions from the audience. Each candidate will have an additional two minutes to respond to those questions. Following the question period, the candidates will have two minutes each to make a closing statement. So let's introduce our candidates. Randy Morissette was born and raised in Hudson and has served on the City Council for 15 years. He is a Regional Director for the Comfort Suites Hotel and has been active in numerous community organizations, including the Chamber of Commerce, the Rod and Gun Club, Hudson Boosters, Rotary, the Judicial Conduct Advisory Board, and the Park Board. He is running to retain his seat representing District One. He is being challenged by Carrie Rice. After a successful career with Securian Financial, she has turned her attention to community service. She is a lifelong resident of the St. Croix Valley and has lived in Hudson for more than 10 years. She has been active with Hudson Rotary, the United Way, the YMCA Community Board, the Climate Lobby, and the Inclusion Alliance. Sarah Brock is seeking to represent District Five. She is the co-owner of the Purple Tree operating in downtown Hudson for 15 years. Along with her entrepreneurial experience, she has a background in corporate banking and human resource management. She is active with the Chamber, the Hudson Independent Business Association, Sustain Hudson, and a past board member for the St. Croix Valley Habitat for Humanity and the Hudson Hockey Association. Also running in District Five is Tori Boomsma. She is currently the Assistant Director at the Octagon House Museum and previously served four years on the Board of the Hudson Area Lacrosse Association. Her family have been residents in the Hudson area for 22 years and residents of the city of Hudson for more than 10. She says she'd like the opportunity to help bring the community together. Joyce Hall has represented District Six on the Council since 2015. She currently serves on the Finance and Public Safety Committees, the Public Utilities Commission, and then Hudson and North Hudson Cable Board. She is also a member of Hudson Daybreak Rotary and served on the West Cap Literacy Advocacy Council. She previously worked as a 3M Research Chemist, runs her own business, and is currently an instructor at WITC. Her challenger in District Six is Julie Hefner. She is a commercial and residential realtor. She and her family have lived in Hudson for 20 years. She currently serves on the city's Board of Appeals and is a member of Hudson's Daybreak Rotary. She says she will be committed to being an advocate for her constituents, who will bring new ideas, civil dialogue, and a positive voice to the council. We will begin with our two-minute opening statements, and we will start with you, Randy.
Thanks, Meg. Thanks for everybody for being on the Zoom call. Hello to everybody as well. As Meg said, I'm born and raised in Hudson down on First Street. The St. Croix River and all the trains down there were a part of many of my forts that I built up on up and down along the river, along with the islands out there on the river. I'm married 25 years this year. My wife Kirsten, two adult boys, Jacob, 22, and Mitchell, 18, who just graduated last year. I grew up at the FIPS Center, doing every aspect of the theater down there, and I'm proud to be a flying P award member from the FIPS, and I'm also a financial supporter. I have a bachelor's degree, most people don't know this, in psychology and criminal justice, with a minor in child psychology from UW-Stell. I counseled juvenile delinquents, I think, for Washington County for maybe two, three years at a private shelter over there. That was a rewarding career at one point. Started in hospitality almost 30 years ago. Now I'm the Regional Director, as Meg said, for the company I work with, and I'm the GM at the Comfort Suites here in Hudson. And I just found out last week that I am now in number six rank out of the whole country for that hotel, and we are in the Ring of Honor. So I'm very proud of that and my staff for doing what they have to do for customer service. I'm a past 2002 Chamber Member of the Year. Incredibly involved with many of our organizations, including the 24 years I've been in Noon Rotary, and now I'm currently President of the Noon Rotary, along with being a Paul Harris Fellow, also on the Board of the CJCC, as Meg said, for the county, St. Croix County, and I am the President of the Alumni Association for the University of Wisconsin-Stell and a Board Member on the Foundation Board. I was also appointed to a nine-board member to the Wisconsin Supreme Court Judicial Conduct Review Board. I'm the only citizen member on that, along with a bunch of lawyers and judges, so you can tell how much fun that is. But the neat thing about that story is that I got a call from then Justice Shirley Abramson out of the blue and asked me to serve, and I couldn't really say no to her. And if you've met her, she doesn't take no for an answer. God rest her soul, though. I'm currently also serving as the Alderman for District One for 15 years. It's been a humbling honor to serve the citizens.
Two minutes.
Of District One. What'd you say? I've always tried to use common sense judgment when making decisions. This is a great need to keep experienced in the office at this time to mitigate the big projects coming on the calendar to maximize continued success for the city of Hudson, attracting businesses and families to our city. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Carrie?
Hi, I'm Carrie Rice, and I'm running for Hudson Common Council District One. I spent my entire life in the St. Croix Valley and the last 12 years in the city of Hudson. I'm the oldest of seven, and my parents ran a greenhouse business in Prescott. There we learned the value of hard work, and we literally got our hands dirty. My qualifications for this position stem from my business, personal, and service experience. I recently retired from a career in financial services, where I developed skills in strategic planning, budgeting, and marketing. Strategic work resulted in saving a profitable product line, more than 100 jobs, and adding an additional 30 jobs, all during the early part of the recession of the early 2000s, the dot-com bubble recession. Risk management is central. It's a central tenet to how I view life in my career and central to my personal values. I do not like waste, but I also see the need to invest for the future. Service to others is just in my bones. Throughout my adult lifetime, I've served as a volunteer and board member for several nonprofit organizations, and I even started a few. Now that I have more time to serve, I'm turning my energy to my home city. My children are Korean-American adoptees and live in Hudson, as do my grandchildren. For all of us, Hudson is home, and we feel lucky.
Thirty seconds.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm done, Meg.
Okay. Sarah?
Hi, everyone. I am running to serve our Common Council District Five. I bring to our city almost 30 years as an active community, and with over half of those being a small business owner in our city's downtown. In my work, I regularly meet new residents in our community, and often they share with me how they long to be part and feel part of our community. I grew up a pastor's kid, and we moved around a lot. And that feeling of wanting to belong, it's forever etched in my memory. Citizens have been telling us they want to get involved. They want to be engaged in our community, and that's a beautiful thing. Hudson has so very much to offer, and it is an incredible place, and I feel grateful to call it my home. It is my commitment to work tirelessly for all residents, new, lifetime, and in-between, because at the end of the night, we're all Hudson. My history as a business owner involves collaborating with other leaders, community members, employees, to further enhance the vibrancy of our city. Additionally, our family-owned business is a public benefit corporation. That's a business that works to balance how we treat planet, people, and the profit. So on a daily basis, part of my responsibilities include responsible management of finances, human resources, and our natural resources. These are skills that I will continue to strengthen and that I will leverage for our city. Should I be elected, our community can count on my vote to reflect and honor sustainability with a real commitment to smart growth that's people-centered. Thanks so much. I look forward to our conversation tonight.
Thanks. Tori?
Excuse me. Hi, my name's Tori Boomsma, and I am running for the City Council seat for Fifth District. My family and I have been residents in the Hudson area for over 22 years and residents in the city of Hudson for over 13 years. My husband Marty and I have two boys, Henry and Charlie, who attend Hudson High School. Henry will graduate this year, 2021, and he'll be enlisting into the Air Force, and Charlie's currently a freshman. We bought our home down on Third Street over four years ago. Our goal, living in Hudson, was to eventually end up downtown, where we could be close to the shops dining in the river. I also have spent four years on the Board of the Hudson Area Lacrosse Association, like Meg mentioned, and am currently the Assistant Director of the Octagon House Museum, which I absolutely adore. I'm also a proud graduate of the Hudson Citizens Police Academy. Hudson was my home when I was young. I attended Fourth Street Elementary, which is now Willow River. I performed at the very first production of the FIPS Center for the Arts, Randy, and I lived across from it and played in Burton Field. I remember the old Carnegie Library and the lower level of the children's area and how magical that was. I moved back here to Hudson in 1998 because I know this area has the values I want to instill in my children as well. The rich history of our little river town, which has grown into a vibrant and beautiful community, creates a desire for me to serve all of its residents. I am proud to live in Hudson, where neighbors help neighbors. My primary goal is to lead from the standpoint of bringing our community together. No partisan agendas, no partisan politics. I will leave Washington DC and Madison where they are. I will lead to keep our city's small-town feel, but allow it to grow and be prosperous so all of our residents can thrive. I'm very excited about the prospect of serving my community on City Council. Thank you.
Sorry. Joyce?
Well, thank you to the Chamber and Meg and the River Channel. Also, thank you to the audience, but thank you for attending. Thank you for hosting this forum. In 2007, my husband and I were living in the Lake Geneva area when my husband had a job opportunity in Oakdale. And we had lived in North St. Paul for quite a while and in other areas of the Twin Cities for quite a while while I was going to school. And so we knew that we wanted to come back to this area. And at that time, the housing market collapsed, and we couldn't sell our house down in the Lake Geneva area. So we were in an apartment for more than a year here in Hudson, and we decided that this was where we wanted to stay. We really loved the beauty of the river and the downtown area, the quaintness of it and the historic feel of it. We enjoyed the restaurants and the shops, and we especially liked sitting out on the patio at the San Pedro Cafe and sharing our dessert after having dinner. So that's when we decided to find a house in Hudson. So anyway, Meg touched a little bit on my qualifications, but I'll expand on that. I've got six years of experience. I've been elected three times. I've got a broad understanding of how municipal government works. I've attended webinars and training on topics such as Strong Towns and the Board of Review, the Police and Fire Commission, also the Citizen Police Academy. I've got a bachelor's degree in chemistry with a math minor and a PhD in chemistry with experience working for 3M. I've been Council President, elected twice by my peers. Thank you.
Julie?
Good evening, everybody. 20 years ago, my husband and I very intentionally chose Hudson as our community. We've been married for 25 years. We have two grown children. Zane is an electrical engineer and a recent grad from Iowa State. Chloe is a sophomore at UW River Falls and majoring in physics and secondary ed. I was born in Minnesota to two educators, one from Evlith and one from Denver, Colorado. My family's continuing pursuit of education took us to Colorado, where I graduated from Colorado State with a degree in business and a minor in economics. My graduate work is in leadership and education. It was here I met and married my husband, Russ, whose service in the Air Force took him from a farm outside of Superior, Wisconsin, to Colorado State as well.
State as well.
State as well. Where he graduated.
Where he graduated with construction management.
Construction management. Am I the only one hearing?
I can hear it too.
No, I'm here.
Can we pause and fix that?
There we go.
There we go. Thank you so much. After college, I spent more than a decade traveling extensively throughout the world as a Business Development Director for a Fortune 500. I was responsible to create, implement, and manage new ways to grow our division. I was successful in growing revenue for my division from over $10 million to $100 million by creating not only new markets for us, but finding new uses for our product in current markets. And this is relevant to my run for City Council because those years gave me invaluable experience and skills to communicate, to collaborate, and to bring people together from various countries and cultures and companies to guide and manage those groups, work together for everybody's benefit. I'm a relationship builder and an idea person, and I know how to put those into action. I'll tell you in a later time then how I have served our community extensively through junior achievement and a lot of volunteering in the schools. I am an active Daybreak Rotary member for several years, and I'm an active member on the Board of Appeals. Thanks. I look forward to tonight as well.
Thank you, everyone. Let's move on to our questions. First one is pretty simple. Why are you running or running again for the Common Council? Carrie, we'll start with you.
I'm driven to serve and have spent time looking at how our city is run. All cities have problems, and ours primarily stem from growth that has outstripped our capacity and aging infrastructure. I want to see the city clearly identify needed infrastructure, communicate those needs, and create a plan to address this. Now, our city has successfully grown the tax base. While we can spread the cost of running the city out over a larger tax base, we cannot ignore the needed investment. Many of the people that I've talked to have expressed concern about development outstripping our capacity, and this is an issue for everyone. Let me give you an example. My experience in financial services and leadership can serve the city well. And in the last place I lived, I served on our Town Home Association Board for over five years. I oversaw the Investment Reserve Fund and served as Treasurer and Board Chair. When I left, the Reserve Fund was at 100% funding, probably one of the few associations in the Midwest with that level of reserves. Most owners didn't ask about the Reserve Fund often, but they were universal about one thing. They couldn't absorb and did not want to experience large assessments needed for necessary work. This was especially true of our retired residents. So I championed and continued to champion until I left, full funding for the reserves. You can read testimonials about what other board members thought of my service at carreyforhudson.com. My strength comes from my ability to deal with reality. I'm not clouded by some gauzy view of the past. The city has real infrastructure problems, and Hudson needs leaders ready to address those challenges.
Thank you. Sarah?
Well, frankly, I am running for City Council for a number of reasons, and I want to be really upfront. When I decided to run for City Council, it certainly was not my initial intent. I had had a side conversation with Sarah Atkins, and she had let me know that she had decided she wasn't going to seek reelection and encouraged me to consider running. And you know, the best laid plans, right? We all start, we think we've got our future set and what's going to happen, and then something else presents itself, and that is what happened in my case. And the more I thought about it, the more excited I got about it. I have recently finished my master's degree in sustainable management, and a huge part of my program was on building sustainable communities. In fact, my thesis is related to that. And so as I think about the role of government, it's about governing for the future. It's about thinking about our children, our neighbors, their kids, and making sure we're building a vibrant community that's going to be here and thriving for decades upon decades before we pass it off to the next generation of leaders. I'm excited because the commitment to balancing how we treat people and planet with the profit, it works. We've used that philosophy in our business for, we're actually approaching our 17th year, and by honoring that, we have seen that the profit comes along. And I do think if our city can make those shifts and do simple things with sustainability, we will see that our community will continue to do well and be thriving, and not only will new residents want to move here, but new businesses as well. Thank you.
Tori?
Well, I keep being asked this question by people on why I want to run for city government, and am I crazy? But my very first answer is I love our city. I really do. I love our little downtown, our beautiful riverfront area, our bustling hilltop and everything in between. Working at the Octagon House Museum allows me to see how Hudson has grown from a tiny, working river town to a bustling, beautiful area filled with people who want to help and see Hudson succeed. And there are so many other reasons, too, but right now, our big focus is the downtown area is a tax increment finance district, which means much of the development happening in Hudson will be downtown in my district. We need a strong representation for the downtown development, and I plan to help with that. Also, communication is really key within the district as well and within city level. With the loss of our local newspaper, we need to forge new pathways to keep our residents informed. That can only make our city stronger. Also, our district representative should have a good working relationship with the mayor and the other City Council members, and I feel like I have the groundwork to start with that, and these relationships are very vital. I also want to make sure that partisan politics stays out of our city politics. There is no room for partisan politics at the city government level. This is a nonpartisan election, and at the city level, we are no longer left, right, Democrat, Republican. We are all Hudsonites. We all come to these offices with different concerns and philosophies, different perspectives and ideas, but in the end, I hope that we can all agree what this election isn't about. It's not about Madison. It's not about DC. It's not about Democrats. It's not about Republicans. It's about finding common ground to make sure Hudson remains the happy, healthy place it is to live in. Thank you.
Joyce?
Well, growing up and as a young adult, I've always served and been a leader in every place that I've lived. I taught religious ed. Even in high school, I did a second-grade class and enjoyed that, and then became a Girl Scout leader. I've chaired committees. I've been a blood donor and volunteer tutor, and now I'm the Daybreak Rotary Sunshine Committee Chair. I also was on the North St. Paul Solid Waste Commission. I've enjoyed serving the community and helping others. Since then, you know, I really, I started, I ran in the first place because I wanted to make sure that we had somebody who was going to be listening to the constituents and representing their views at the council and then also helping them find the right person to help solve the problems that they've had. And I've really enjoyed doing that, but there's still work to do. We've got some safety issues behind the high school. I've introduced the need for speed humps in our city and am still advocating for a policy on them and want to start trying them in some different places to see how the residents react to them. We do have a lot to do with fixing the roads and the infrastructure, also renewable energy utilization. We've got the water and sewer consolidation with North Hudson as well. So I'm very interested in continuing the work that I've done advocating for the people in District Six. Thank you.
Julie?
My first reason is to give back to this community, to serve it, to contribute to it, and protect it. 20 years ago, when we chose Hudson as our home, we bought the whole package, the small-town charm, the schools, the parks, the events, the parades, the hot air fair, booster days, the sense of safety and security, the YMCA, Camp St. Croix, baseball, football, the Red Cross Swim Program, the FIPS, all of it. These things did not happen on their own. These things did not germinate from nothing. Just like our great country, this town was built on good people giving their time, talent, their ideas, their labor, their energy, and their money to build these programs for those who came after them. This town gave my husband and I an opportunity to give our children a life that neither one of us had, one of safety and security, of opportunity and education. I want to give my time, my talent, my hard work and energy to influence and advocate for and protect this community that gave my family everything we asked for. When we chose to build our lives here 20 years ago. Second of all, I want to represent and advocate for District Six. We all thank Joyce for her six years of service, but it is time for a change. Our district includes the YMCA, the middle school, Prairie, the high school, but there's not a whole lot happening in our district. I have listened to Joyce's list of accomplishments, including the street light stop sign, a speed limit change in front of her home, some drainage issues, and it's just not a whole lot to get excited about. I want to influence what happens to the last large remaining parcel of land that is owned by the county and is in our district. Although Joyce has represented us for six years and is a previous member of the Park Board, I have not heard, nor have, as anyone I have talked to, heard her mention this as a priority. Once this land is gone, it's gone, and I'm going to do everything possible to heavily influence what happens on that corner and to reserve a large part of that for the public. The Atwood property, that was personal property. This is public land. It needs to remain public land, and if no one is fighting for it before a plan is put in place to profit from it, we'll lose it and it'll be gone.
Randy?
Well, I have a passion to serve, and everything that you guys, ladies, have all said, I helped build. And through the Chamber, being involved as an ambassador, and all the Tourism Committee that we were there and going to visit new businesses, to the 15 years I've spent here working on building the city that you all have come to love and want to be a part of. A lot of people, including myself, built that, and I'm very proud of the people that have put their blood, sweat, and tears into this community. And there's a lot more to do, but you can't spend your way into it. You got to have smart, planned growth, which I think we've done pretty good at. We've planned for expansion of the wastewater sewer. We've planned for expansion on the data we get from the census, the strength of officers. We have planned by building a new public safety building that I championed for years. So we can't spend our way into it. We don't have ultimate money. We've been very conservative and very conscious of spending, and we even lowered the mill rate this last tax period. So we're very conscious of the budgeting process with our capital outlay, which we do every two years. We did it every five there for a little bit. Now we're back to two because of COVID. But we invested smartly, and there's a lot of projects. And my number one next two years is to get the 11th Street Bridge widened and safety across the highway before MINDOT comes in and decides to do all their projects without us knowing. More to come.
We'll move on to our next question. What do you think are the three most important issues for the Hudson Council to address? And this time, Sarah, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Well, indeed, it's kind of like asking a parent who their favorite child is. There's so many important things we see in our city. During the past few months, I have been meeting with community members, city employees, and elected officials, and based on these many conversations, a few things have become abundantly clear. Our community members want to be better informed with respect to what's happening in our city. Getting news as it relates to Wisconsin and our community is a challenge, and it's a growing challenge as the role of our local newspaper has changed. It's time for elected officials and leaders to prioritize keeping our
It's time for elected officials and leaders to prioritize keeping our community informed and having the information easily accessible. Next, when I have also met with city employees and elected officials, there's been a resounding answer that our city's infrastructure needs to be addressed and that it is of the utmost importance. Our roads are in disrepair, our utilities need to be addressed. And we are in a really good situation because we have, our city has hired amazing department heads that come with a wealth of experience. And they are working diligently to find the best ways to make sure that it will be the least impactful to our citizens. Yet it is super important to the quality of life around here. My last area that I, it's really a broad reaching one, but it's about enhancing livability for all of our residents. Hudson is a gem and yet we have to continue to involve. And some of the things that fall into this area include workforce housing, transportation, protection of green spaces, walkways, parks, welcoming community and celebrating our diversities. So that kind of all falls under that branch of livability. Thanks for listening.
Tori?
Well, my three top things right now, after discussing with several members, the is our comprehensive plan right now is number one, that's being discussed right now. This will bring us 20 years into the future. I believe we have to focus on our bonding when it comes to that, however. We have some major infrastructure items on the horizon. Like Randy mentioned, we've got a bridge on the 11th Street and the others on Carmichael. We need to make sure that those are taken care of and that those are taking and ready to go. But we also need a new sewer plant in the very near future. This will cost the city of Hudson almost $40 million. And with these upcoming costs, we need to keep our current spending low to keep our bonding rate high so that we can borrow these monies at a really good rate. Any additional unplanned bonding now can affect our ability to get a good rate in the future or not even be able to borrow at all. So currently, the infrastructure repair plan that is in the works is paid for and ready to go. Our city is in a very strong, good standing right now from what the city council has already established and laid out for us. But we also need to work on funding our library. It's a gem that we have in our city, the programming, the camps, the classes and the, and more that our library offers. This area cannot be lost. We must work with the county and the surrounding communities to ensure that we can continue to fund it properly. It is our last hope for a non-bias, non-political and non-religious information center. We also need to ensure our public safety is top notch. People move to Hudson because it is safe. Our police force does an amazing job keeping our citizens protected. However, many citizens express concern that our demographics change downtown after around 10:00 PM. Our diners head home and the younger groups come out. Our crime levels and our crimes have changed over the past few years and we have residents who say they are afraid to enjoy our downtown establishments. We need to make sure our public safety is strong. And I will make sure that we provide the support that our police and fire need to maintain the security of our city. And I'm also working on a project right now to support our officers that I planned to implement during my time in office. I want to do everything we can to be certain that Hudson has the resources, it needs to be a thriving community. But equally important part of what makes a community prosperous is maintaining a low tax burden. I have paid taxes after taxes after taxes in the city of Hudson for our library, for our infrastructure, for our public safety, for our parks and our water and sewer. Last year, my taxes were over $7,300. Fortunately, they did go down a bit last year because of Hudson's great economic growth and new residents. Moving forward, we need to maintain reasonable levels of fees for our residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Tori. Joyce?
Well, you've asked for the top three issues to address and like everyone else, it is hard to choose, but infrastructure includes a lot of different items and so I'm, so that's a a big concern for everyone. We have roads that need to be repaired, but we've gotten way behind on that. But the Public Works Department is, or committee is, is working on a plan for that and the new city engineer, that was one of the first things that I talked to him about when he joined our, our team was what, let's get a, a road repair plan in place. Consolidating the public works garage, garages and having those all together so that saves a lot of our, the time for the Public Works Department employees. A larger facility for the police and then also more police officers. And that's something that we've just recommended, the Public Safety Committee just recommended to the, the council is increasing our police force. Better funding for the library. I, that breaks my heart that our library, we've got a beautiful library and a beautiful building. People love it, but we don't have it properly funded and we need to do that. So that's the infrastructure part of it. But we also have a need for worker housing and all of these things need to be addressed in the comprehensive plan, which is being worked on right now and we need, which we need to finish. But worker housing is, is a big concern for me as well. Safety near schools and along Carmichael, the Carmichael Corridor, we've got some real issues that need to be addressed. And, and then we need a shared ride service as well. But while we are also preserving the character of the neighborhoods, that's another issue that we need to be concerned about as well. So those are the top issues that I, I see. Thank you.
Julie?
My first is public safety. There have been some things happening lately, not only in our community, but in our world that I think we can all agree have threatened our sense of safety and security, potentially our ability to enjoy our thriving downtown. The safety and security of all our residents is of utmost importance and every elected official should be talking about it, form, formulating ideas around it and providing solutions for it. People not only need to be safe, they need to feel safe. And I do fully support our police. I thank them for doing a great job with the resources they have. I stand with them, I stand behind them. Second, measured and managed growth. We are growing, we are. We need to be very concerned about how and where we grow. We need to make proactive and conscious decisions to allow ourselves to evolve, but maintain the identity of the Hudson that we love. We can't grow to the west, we can't go north, we can only go so far to the east. And then we're going to be meeting River Falls at some point on our journey south. Right? We need to proactively manage what we do here and not leave it up to River Falls or other towns that are growing to decide where our borders are. The third is economics, infrastructure and services. We must be able to provide an infrastructure to support whatever growth we do embrace. The recently installed GIS system I know has identified every pipe, every joint, you know, that's in the water and sewer systems and identified some of those components is over 100 years old. We must proactively address our aging infrastructure before we have a huge bill for not properly maintaining it and strengthening the system to support not only who we are, but who we are becoming. In order to keep our taxes down, we need to expand our revenue base. And what is the best way to do this? It's not single family homes, it's businesses. As a commercial and residential Realtor, I can tell you that it is estimated every single family home uses a dollar nine in services for every dollar in tax revenue that they generate. One sure way to expand our tax base and to ease the burden is to expand our business park with a second phase to the south. We need to be talking about this, every council member needs to be talking about this. We need to balance the economics of our growth so we can efficiently and effectively provide services and infrastructure to everyone.
Thank you, Julie. Randy?
Yeah, my top three are, for one, public safety. And quite frankly, I've heard from others and my opponents are, want to fundamentally change our police department. And frankly, I'm tired of people suggesting we have a problem in our police department. The Hudson community is safe because of the way our officers are professionally doing their job. It always has been. I'll continue to support new equipment, most recently recommended for new officers throughout the Public Safety Committee. I strongly support all of our officers and the staff in the police department, 100%. I support them because they keep us safe, they run to the emergencies while most of us run away. It's a calling for most, not great pay. But when they save someone's life or a property, it's a reward which is priceless. This goes as well to our EMS and our fire. I support them 100% as well. I supported and watched the public safety building finally become reality. Our police, fire, EMS have done an incredible job. Without them, the, the required number of officers is on track to be next to our census when we get those numbers to add more officers. So that's a huge thing. But I wonder if the community would be as inviting as it has been with so many moving here because Hudson is viewed safe. There's a reason for that when they're looking to relocate because it is safe. These men and women literally put their lives in danger for our safety and we need to find a better way to acknowledge that. Infrastructure, absolutely, we have to stay on track. But again, we have to be smart about how we fund it and how we, how we go about what's priority. We've got big projects from the DOT coming that we need experienced leadership in there to mitigate how our citizens are going to be able to move around the city, especially if those bridges are detoured. And that's, that's a concern. The other one would be the quality of life in Hudson. We all moved here or all of us were born here for a reason. I was an active businessman for over 30 years. I helped and supported bringing Uline in, Phillips Plastics, hotels, restaurants, Target, the boutique shops downtown, all the business parks and the numerous housing developments. But we did it with smart controlled growth. And that helped with supporting our tax base. The Lakefront Project I support and the beauty that the river provides us is huge. And I support the revisioning of what we're going to do. Capitalizing on the river town beauty that attracted all of you and all of our citizens to the community of what it is. We really have an eye-
Excuse me, thank you, Randy.
On common sense.
Carrie?
I have three priorities, but I'm going to address something Randy said first. Randy, I want you to go back and listen to whatever tape you think you saw because you never heard me say anything other than support for the police, which I do. In fact, I advocated for additional training and resources to help our police be better. And I further since then have come to learn that there may be a need for additional mental health support because the demands on our police right now are probably higher than they've ever been. So the three top priorities that I see are, and I think Randy and others agree on this, is the need to look at infrastructure. We have roads in need of attention and with aging pipes underneath and a lot of people just are not aware of this need. We have traffic congestion that is dangerous and Carmichael Road is a prime example. The 11th Street Bridge, I agree, needs to be widened to accommodate what is a growing Hudson. We are not a tiny town any longer and that's a reality. The major arteries that come into and out of Hudson are really funded by the state and we should be demanding that our reps at Madison be at the table with us and prioritize this part of the state. We, if we have to pound the table, we do. My second priority is to modernize how we communicate and engage the people that live here. Everyone loves this place, but they don't know how things are getting done or how to find out what's going on. I love the paper. And the fact of the matter is if you rely on the paper for figuring out how to do things in this town, you would be pretty behind the times and many people don't subscribe. But a lot of people have this. So we can modernize this, we can help people find out when road work is happening in their area so they can better manage their lives and how to engage our workers, our great staff at the city. I, a subset of this is I think we need to pay a special attention to the seniors that live in this town. These are the people who helped build the city and they decided to retire here. These people, they're willing to organize and just meet us halfway to find out how we can better engage them so that they too can continue to have access where they need it. My third priority is relative to updating the city plan. The Planning Commission has had to delay that. But you know, in business, we find out that it's essential to have a value proposition.
Excuse me, Carrie, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, here's the evening's understatement, it's been a difficult year. What are your thoughts to address the divisions and problems that have been created by COVID-19 in our community? And we'll start with Tori.
Thanks. COVID has created, created fear and isolation and incivility and intolerance within our own city. In our worry, we've forgotten how to communicate with each other. We talk over each other and challenge each other's motives. Sometimes we've forgotten that all of us just want to be healthy and we want our families and our community to also be healthy. But with those different, differing perspectives that I talked about earlier comes different definitions of health too. Some of us may be more anxious about our own health and the health of a vulnerable loved one in our care. And then while others may be more anxious about the health of our wider community long after COVID fades. So like many things in governing, it's a balance that begins with coming together and listening with curiosity and humility. And that's why my campaign slogan is bringing Hudson together. I'm very excited to see where Mayor O'Connor and our local service organizations will be taking the new Golden City or Golden Rule City initiative. I believe this is the right step to healing our community right now. Respect for each other can't be piecemeal together. It has to be a tidal wave that washes over the community and I hope to be part of that wave.
Thanks, Tori. Joyce?
Thank you. Yes, COVID has been a difficult problem to, to deal with. We've had problems with big differences on the mask ordinance and encouraging masks and social distancing. And then we've also had issues with the downtown area being overcrowded with too many people. And that was a COVID issue because of the Minnesota closing their bars and restaurants and people coming over here and but as a council, we have handled these issues as, as best we can. We do have differing opinions on things, but we've all listened to each other and we've worked together to, to make decisions. I plan to continue with encouraging the use of masks and social distancing. Continue following the scientific evidence to guide my positions and responses. And it's all, it's still evolving. We're, we have evolving information all the time. So I will be tracking that and listening to what the public health officers have to say, what the CDC, the World Health Organization and the state have to say about what's best for our community and continue to advocate for that. I will also continue to listen to the police chief regarding bar times and making sure that we've got things handled downtown as well. I'm very glad to see that vaccines are available and I'm looking forward to getting one myself. And I'm looking forward to getting our community back to as normal as possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Joyce. Julie?
My thoughts to address the divisions and problems created by COVID, communication and respect. Communication and respect go a very long way in bridging any divide and healing any relationship. We must model this behavior. We cannot require something of others that we aren't willing to do ourselves. We must listen, we must open ourselves up to the ideas and information that others have and we have to trust where that information is coming from. And that means that it has to be delivered with integrity. That means that it must have no agenda. That means no partisan politics. Look at New York City withheld data on deaths in nursing homes because they were afraid of the backlash. There are countless examples of people with agendas not being honest in their communication. And this dishonesty and distrust is, that is what is keeping people apart. There's been a lot of misinformation, varying interpretations, politicizing, furthering of agendas with COVID, just like there is with every other crisis that people can hijack for their own purposes. And we must do better, every single one of us. Because we can only be responsible for what each one of us does. I know that I can leave partisan politics out of my decision-making. I know it because I hate partisan politics. And one of the reasons that I am running for office is because I did look at Joyce's campaign when she ran for mayor and I, she does take a tremendous amount of input, money, influence, ideas, positions from one of the political parties. And I don't, I haven't taken a dime and I won't. I will be your representative, not their representative. And further, people in our community are advocating heavily for more diversity here. If we want to become more diverse and inclusive as a community, we're going to have to learn to have differences without bullying or bashing or disrespecting one another. There is a small but very loud contingent of people in our community to advocate, who are advocating for diversity and they are mean.
Excuse me, thank you, Julie. Thank you.
Okay, Randy?
Division and problems, boy. It's been one of the toughest years everyone has said, of course. People need to get back to respecting each other's opinions. I think Joyce and I have always done that, we've had an open relationship. We agree to disagree. We agree to disagree. Um, you gotta find common ground for a solution to any particular issue. I'm not perfect, and I can always improve as well with my deliberations, with my fellow council people and the mayor. The politics are personal destruction and Hudson has to stop. Hudson deserves sound and respectful and thoughtful leaders. People that don't not follow a certain narrative by a certain group. Leaders that do not rush judgment on issues that affect the Hudson community or brings harm to individuals without the facts being known. Any violence, physical or verbal violence, has no place in this Hudson community, period. Hudson politics is supposed to be nonpartisan. We need to get back to managing the city's business. Get back to the nuts and bolts of running a city regardless of your political identity. Focus on Hudson issues, and not on the national or the state narratives that do not pertain to our community. Thanks.
Carrie?
Well, all of us long for a return to something called normal. And I appreciate the creative ways that our businesses have transformed to address the risks of COVID-19. We're not upwards yet, and we may need to take measures on the future as new information becomes available, but at least we have reason for optimism. Last month, an American died every twenty-eight seconds, and that is a hard sentence to say out loud. Um, I don't believe that the divisions are as great as some believe. Uh, much of the noise that comes out of our TV and radio is not reflected in our neighborhoods. People generally respect each other and honor our personal choices about safety measures. I wear a mask in public and not out of fear, but I respect for my fellow humans. We need to learn from this and not pretend that we'll never face another crisis. It's not our matter of if, it's a matter of when we have something happen outside of our control. I have a history that of bringing people together to solve problems. In my professional life, my team worked on crisis plans. Every year, we refined them, we factored them into our planning and our budgeting, and we will have done. We shared them with other senior executives and that affected how the company ran. Uh, when I say that risk management is a central tenet to the way I operate, this is what I mean. The calculation is not a zero risk, but we need to demonstrate good governance. Our people want to feel safe. And I, I respect the references to national politics and other things, um, but I can assure you that I do not have some crazy agenda. People have shared stories with me. They want their families to be safe in this town, and those are the kinds of issues that come to me. So with that, I thank you.
Thank you. Sarah?
Thank you. Indeed, as everyone has said, it really has been a difficult year. Yet I take comfort in the fact that so many residents have shared their opinions. They've attended the Zoom meetings, um, and have used their voices. And there is a unifying theme, and it's one of deep love and care for our community. I believe if we can bring key stakeholders to the table, we can create solutions that work towards, um, towards creating a better sense of community. Many of us have been watching the common council meetings, and at times the comment dialogue has not worked to create goodwill. Sadly, at times, it really has been divisive. I think with a renewed commitment from our leadership to set the tone for the kind of community that we want to be, one that embraces differing opinions, will move us towards a goal of finding harmony amongst our citizens. I believe in creating ways that involve citizens as we work for solutions. That's a great starting point. Also, as leaders, we are called to do our best despite being human, um, but we do our best to live and honor that value. Thank you.
Our next question is, how will you work to build collaboration with the mayor and the other council members? And Joyce? We'll start with you.
Thank you. Um, before I start with that though, I'd like to address some things that, uh, Julie said in the last, uh, section, um, that I have partisan, um, goals in my, um, in, in, in my, um, camp, campaign. And I just, you know, things like, um, renewable energy and, um, improving the environment. Yeah, those are, I guess those are partisan, but, uh, I certainly do not mean to be partisan in, in this nonpartisan race. So, um, I've always had cordial relationships with, um, the mayor and the other, um, council members. In fact, uh, Randy just, uh, gave me a shout out on that one, and I, I appreciate that. We've had a good relationship. Um, and, um, you know, because we know, we have to work together even when we disagree. And, um, I'm guided by a few principles that, first of all, I'm always respectful of others and their viewpoints. Um, I believe that everyone wants the best for the, for our city, although we may disagree on what that might be and how we might get there. Um, I also, I listen to my constituents and represent their concerns to the best of my ability. Um, I do have a record of, um, collaboration. For example, um, the West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, was, um, is a, is headquartered in Eau Claire, and I, uh, called and talked to them um, about some, um, information about safety behind the high school, because they did some, um, safety audits around the, um, grade schools and the middle school. And so I was able to get somebody to come out and, um, at no charge to the city and, um, tell us a little bit more about, um, their observations on what was going on back there that needed to be addressed. And so we were able to get some things addressed on, on that as well. Um, at 3M, I found that, uh, differing points of view led to better, um, discussions and better solutions. So I do welcome some, um, differing points of view and being able to discuss them, um, as, um, respectful and reasonable people. So, um-
Excuse me, thank you, Joyce. Thank you.
Julie?
First, I just wanna finish that last sentence, and I was just gonna say, and that's what causes the division to remain. If we wanna heal our, our, um, our, our town, um, we have to have that communication and respect. So how to build collaboration? I have spent my entire career collaborating with people, committees, businesses, and boards in some very difficult and high-stakes situations and under immense amount of pressure and looming deadlines. I'm good at it. I am a solid calm in a storm. I know how to diffuse situations versus escalate them. I know when someone is trying to understand, I know how to understand what someone is trying to say, even if they cannot articulate it. When you travel the globe and you participate in putting deals together between companies from different nations, you learn to really listen. You have to want to listen and to learn and to understand as well as communicate your position. You can't charge in like the light brigade. You have to be at the table, ready to create the best solution possible for our city and our residents. Second, with relationships. Everything I do in my career as a real estate agent and everything I've done in my past career as a corporate director is based on creating and maintaining positive working relationships with a vast array of people. I work with and I serve people from the entire spectrum, uh, the, the working spectrum, from the janitor cleaning the bathroom to the CEO in front of the boardroom. I know how to talk to people, relate to people, listen to people, to maintain honest, open, solid relationships with people because I care about people. My livelihood is always dependent on it, and I'm gonna go further to say that my success has been because of it. I've been extremely successful in every professional endeavor I've embarked on, and it's because of the relationships that I'm able to create. I won't allow myself to be bullied, mistreated, or abused, nor will I mistreat others. I'll bring a strong, honest voice-
Thank you, Julie.
And I'll continue with the relationship I have with the mayor.
Randy?
Uh, collaboration, that's a big one. Starts with good communication, and that begins with me as a leader, having an open dialogue with all of our council members and the public, and including the mayor. On the issues that come up that we disagree on, looking for a compromising solution through respectful discussions. Finding a common ground solution for whatever comes up for the city of Hudson. Working together, at the end of the day, we all want what is best for Hudson. It's a matter of how we get there. Respect and compromise, and it starts with me. Thanks.
Uh, Carrie?
Well, I was successful in business because I learned how to work with teams and bring people together. I was successful by focusing on the mission and aligning with leaders towards a common goal. And we're all successful when we treat each other with mutual respect. You know, as leaders, we can take down the temperature by choosing our words carefully and not jumping to a conclusion. We make better decisions when we're not clouded with emotion. This is behavior that I've always expect, expect my children, they can tell you that. And the people of Hudson should expect nothing less from their leaders. But I wanna be clear about something, because the word collaboration is misunderstood a lot of times. People think that it's kumbaya. Um, I wanna be clear, collaboration does not mean unanimous voting, which can be a sign of a lack of rigor. It does not mean happy talk. In short, you can respectfully agree to disagree without being disagreeable. Uh, you wanna advocate for your constituents. Um, I do agree with the mayor on the Golden Rule initiative. I'm so pleased by this. It's an important, it's important that every member of our community be safe, valued, welcomed, and respected. The Golden Rule is a starting place to bring awareness, but it's not the ending place. Hudson leaders need to own our culture and our brand. It cannot be outsourced to our faith communities and service organizations. You know, a few days ago, some people are aware of this, there was a flyer being handed out at several Hudson retail stores from a neo-Nazi group. I'm aware of one family of a biracial daughter, daughter saw the flyer and she asked her parents to move. Now that, that hurts all of us, and it hurts our brand. And I just wanna be clear, this is not who Hudson is, it's not how I see Hudson, but we need to take appropriate action, not to avoid our problems, but to respond appropriately when they happen and not pretend they didn't happen here. So.
Thank you. Sarah?
Sarah, you're muted.
You're still muted, Sarah.
Julie, Tori, do you wanna go ahead and get Sarah back on?
Yeah, I can go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, um, like I mentioned, um, with the communication before in one of my three topics, um, I plan to communicate with my district to make sure that they are fully heard, that I can be a channel for the residents from my district to the council. I believe that is the only way that it should be taken care of. Um, that's what your council member is there for, is to communicate with the district, to bring their needs to the table. And again, um, there's a great quote that I really like. It's one of the most sincere forms of respect is actually listening to what another has to say. And I truly believe that. You have to listen to understand. You can't just keep talking over somebody. Um, I plan to work together for the best interest of my district and the city as whole. A hallmark of a good community is that people can disagree, and that's encouraged. I actually encourage people to disagree because, um, you'll get, you'll gain more out of it, but you can still work together to make good even though you disagree. Um, and so that's what I plan to do, is just to listen and, um, have respect, show respect, and earn the respect of people, of the others that are seated, seated at the table with me. Thank you.
Sarah, we got you back?
I think I'm back. Anyways, um, I am the first to confess that I am definitely a work in progress. Um, nonetheless, I have already begun to work to create relationship with council members and our mayor. A lot of, um, our members are folks that I've known and have worked alongside in other committees and in other activities in our city. The approach that I use in my life, both professionally and personally, is to be honest, to engage in civil discourse, and to work on building trust. It takes time, it takes commitment. It's crucial to determine what our shared values are and our goals, and then work together to create meaningful change and open discussion. Essentially, my answer is, is pretty darn short. It's thoughtful and respectful communication at all times.
Thank you, Sarah. Those are the, uh, first, uh, submitted questions that we have. What little time, we don't have a whole lot of time left. And so if we do not get to a question that someone from the audience submitted, please feel free to reach out to the candidates directly. Their information will be posted with this, uh, with this program. Um, our question, submitted question is, with the growth in the city has come an increase in property taxes for homeowners and in monthly rent increases for citizens. How would you address the growing housing challenges, especially for the workforce in our community? And we'll start with Julie.
Creatively. I think that there are, um, a lot of options. When we come together at the table, we brainstorm. Um, we get everybody's ideas, they build upon one another. Um, everybody gets to, um, put out there, you know, all of the options. I've heard a lot of different options. Nobody really likes the, you know, big apartment buildings that are here. I'm not a fan of what's happening over at the Atwood property in terms of forty-five houses there, two big apartment buildings. I know we have to have, um, more affordable housing. I just wanna be really smart about it, um, and where it goes. I think that we can, um, look at some of the lots that we have in Hudson and, uh, that are available for duplexes and maybe make those triplexes, maybe make those fourplexes. I think that that's a, um, really easy thing to do and expand the, the affordable housing. I really like the idea of, um, when we do do some apartments, have some to be, um, studio apartments. I'm a Realtor. Nobody knows better than me, uh, what, what our housing challenges are here. And, um, so those are some of the ideas that I would have.
Okay. Randy?
We've, I agree, we need to get some more of the, uh, I mean, we were smart about trying to get affordable housing and with, working with the, the developers and getting that in there. We, you know, the bottom line is, do we have a shortage of affordable housing? Yes. Um, can we build it? I guess if, housing or apartments, it's tough to say. I mean, the, our geographic locations aren't, uh, building themselves anymore. So when a developer comes in, we have to sit down and ask them, what can we do? And, and go from there. It is a challenge, it continues to be a challenge, but as we continue with the comprehensive plan and, and weed that down to what we will eventually see in the next twenty years, hopefully, we have some answers through that, that, uh, plan being presented.
Okay. Carrie?
Repeat the question, I wanna make sure I understand it.
Um, with the increase in property taxes for homeowners and monthly rent increases increases for citizens, how would you address growing housing challenges, especially for Hudson's workforce in the community?
Um, well, you know, I've never met anyone in this town that wants to see their taxes go up, myself included, but a lot of people just don't know what they're paying for. So that's where the value proposition comes in. Relative to people being able to afford to live here, we have people who work in this town, essential workers, city workers, police officers, who can afford to live here. Um, there have been some efforts made to increase the, the amount of, you know, apartments or even, you know, I live in, in a new addition that has some fourplexes and triplexes, but even them are, you know, they started at four hundred thousand dollars, which is, which is tough for a market rate. Um, I haven't seen a lot of creative solutions, um, you know. I, I would like to learn some more about them. Um, I've heard a couple of ideas about maybe being able to retrofit some, um, you know, adding rental property to some older homes where people might want to be able to rent, rent out part of their property, but, um, none of them are easy because our property values are going up, and that makes, that makes it unaffordable for a lot of essential workers.
Sarah?
Thank you for asking this question. This is something I'm super passionate about, um, especially with a background with Habitat for Humanity and being married to a public school teacher, so I understand the parameters and how challenging it is to find affordable housing. Our police officers can't afford to live here. Some of our city employees can't afford to live here. Our manufacturers, they can't get employees because they can't afford to live here. This is a big concern facing our city. Why don't we look at where our manufacturing is happening? Can we do something to make so that we could have apartments as close by to there so that they could be able to get their employees to work? There has to be solutions. There are experts out there that we can bring to the table. This is not a new issue to our city, and it's time that it become a top priority. And I pledge, this is a big commitment and a big concern of mine. I want people to be able to live in the town where they work. Thank you.
Tori?
Thank you.
From what I understand, our taxes actually didn't go up last year. Our houses were reassessed after they hadn't been in over ten years. Unfortunately, it was at a, kind of a bad time. Uh, that is out of our control. Um, and so, and, and like I mentioned earlier, my taxes went down and a lot of peoples went down. However, their homes, homes were reassessed for a higher property value, because that's what Hudson is. Hudson is a place- Hudson is a place that people want to live in, and that's why we love it here. We, we do need affordable housing. What the answer is, I don't know right now. We have, we have limited space, we have limited growth right now. We need developers who want to come in to build these buildings. However, these buildings aren't profitable for those developers. Single-family homes, those are profitable. So what the answer is right now, we need to work with people who want to build that structure. Thank you.
Okay. Joyce?
The, this definitely has to be addressed in the comprehensive plan, and there are some, there has been some conversation about this. Some of the things that we can do, leveraging grants if possible. Another thing, well, all right, yes, with, with any development, it, it's important that the development generate enough taxes to be able to cover the, the infrastructure and the services that are needed by that development. And so that's one of the reasons that apartment buildings are put into the developments these days, in order to increase the, the tax value of that parcel. And so that's good that we are getting some more apartments built. One of the things that happened was that we needed a, a change in some zoning issues and some perking issues as well. But one thing that Minneapolis is doing is they are allowing accessory dwellings in single-family homes throughout the entire city now. And what that means is somebody could either convert their garage or put a, another floor on their, above their garage and turn that into an apartment for, like a studio for a young person to, to rent. And so that's something that we could look into and see whether the residents of Hudson would be amenable to something like that. It's, it's a way for people to be able to afford their house a little bit better as well, a little easier, because they've got a little bit of income coming in on, on their property as well. So there are some solutions that other cities are, are trying, and we need to look into those and see which ones will be acceptable to the residents of Hudson. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. We're kind of running up on the end of our time, and again, I'd like to say that we have had other questions submitted that we will not have time to address in this meeting, but you should feel free to contact the candidates directly. That information, how to reach them, will also be posted with this program. I want to thank you all for your responses. You can now each make a closing statement. We'll go in the reverse order of the opening statements, and again, you'll have two minutes. And this time, we'll start with Julie.
Please remember that I am running against Joyce's record, and it's not personal. I do feel like the seat, this seat on the council needs to change. I do feel like Joyce is very partisan. Her campaigns are paid for in large part from one of the political parties, and when you take thousands of dollars from a political party, I'm sorry, I don't care what you say, they are going to expect you to vote a certain way, back a certain stance, and the city belongs to the people. It doesn't belong to a party. Joyce says she's for maintaining the charm that is Hudson, yet she has voted for every development project put before the council except one. In six years, she did manage to install a street light, some stop signs, change a speed limit, fix some drainage. The speed limit and the, and the light are in front of her house, which she just said someone else brought to her attention, that they were safety issues for the high schoolers. And I feel like that's reacting. We need proactive, original, thoughtful, creative ideas put into action. In six years, the public land behind the government center that I want to proactively be an influential part in defining its future has not been addressed. We can't let some big development plan take a hold of that property and then have to fight to get it back. Right? We need to have community-minded, creative ideas put into action proactively, and that's what I'm going to do. So instead of bringing some new ideas to the council, I know that she is still fighting a cause that wasted over a year of the council's time and cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I am absolutely fed up with partisan politics seeping into every nook and cranny of our lives. I will stand up to the loud fringe voices that take these situations and turn them into crisis to further their agendas. From me, you will see leadership, new workable ideas, solutions, not agendas. I will represent you boldly, honestly, constructively, and productively.
Thank you, Julie.
I'll get these done. I ask for your vote.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Thank you again for bringing us together on this forum to discuss issues of importance to the city residents. I really appreciate this opportunity. I'd like to correct some statement that Julie made. The light is not in front of my house, it is down on Fillmore. And also, I have stood up to other people and people that are of similar bent politically with me. It doesn't matter, I do what's best, what I believe is best for the city at all times. So anyway, tonight, you've heard about my qualifications, my six years of experience, the committees that I've been on, the, I've also, I've been a conservative, I've been fiscally conservative and promoted careful stewardship of tax dollars. I've brought people together, I've showed leadership in many ways. Here's some things that haven't come up. I'm an advocate for healthy recreation opportunities for people of all ages and abilities, such as pickleball courts and a splash pad. I want to ensure that we have open and transparent government. I advocate for inclusion for all. I also advocate for environmental stewardship. I hope you'll find me on Facebook, you'll check my website, and if you live in District Six, I ask for your vote on April 6th, so we can keep Hudson a wonderful place where families and businesses can grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Tori?
I just want to say, is there a place better than Hudson to live? Because I have traveled the world and have always come back happily to a town that is safe, well-run, prosperous, because of the people who live here. Like any city, we do have our challenges, but I believe that Hudson is a gem among gems, where the people who live here honestly want what is best for Hudson as a whole. Businesses are flocking to Hudson, jobs are coming to Hudson, families are moving to Hudson. If there is any truer testament to a community's health and vitality, it should be that it's growing. We need to make sure that Hudson stays attractive to future businesses and residents, as that only ensures our future successes. I promise to work with our public safety departments to ensure they have what they need to protect our residents. I promise to watch and protect our riverfront, our most valued space. I promise to do all I can to support our library by working with the other communities in Sandcore County, so we don't lose it. I promise to communicate with my district in a timely manner, so that everyone is informed about what is happening in Hudson. I promise to help keep our city services properly funded, so that we can grow as, as a successful community. My name is Tori Boomsma, and I ask for your vote on April 6th.
Thank you, Tori. Sarah?
A heartfelt thank you to you, Meg, for facilitating tonight's forum, and to the Hudson Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring this evening. Your efforts to help keep our community members informed and make informed decision is deeply appreciated. And to all of you who joined us tonight and who will be watching this in the future, thank you for setting aside time to learn more about your candidates. As I've been campaigning and connecting with District Five residents, common council members, and city employees, something incredible has become abundantly clear, the interwoven theme of love and care for our community. This is the theme that unites us. If we can remember the shared perspective, I am confident we're going to be able to work through anything to, that faces our city in the near future. Should I be elected? I will work with the understanding that at the end of the day, there is more that unites us than divides us. I will look for the good in each situation while balancing respectful treatment of people and our planet, while I make my decisions. For those in District Five, I am asking for your vote on April 6th. For all Hudson residents, I want you to know, I will work for you. Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thank you. Carrie?
I'm asking for your vote on April 6th. My qualifications, experience, and desire to serve will be an asset for the city. I go into this clear-eyed and ready to deal with the realities of our current situation. I've traveled throughout the country and the world, and I can see with confidence that this is a great place to live, but we can be better. Hudson needs experienced leaders, open to new ideas, and address the realities before us. We're at a rare point in our history. We can build on our strengths that we have currently to make us an even more vibrant city for our, our children down the road. We need to balance our growth with planning, modernize our communications, and develop a clear value proposition, so that when we tax people, they know what they're paying for. I have a philosophy that served me well in business and in leadership roles. I keep my arms around the organization and my fingers out of it. I've developed great leaders with this approach, and I have visited with our city staff, and we have talented people there. I support using a financial dashboard, which I'm amazed that we have these detailed budgets, but a financial dashboard that pulls up the information to not only improve decision-making, but make it more transparent to the people that live here, so they can understand where our resources are going. I do not want or need the income that comes from service to this city. If elected, I'll ask that any income be allocated to maintenance of trails and parks. I believe that these resources add to the quality of life here for everyone and create community. So a vote for me is a vote for experience, a fresh approach, and a vision for the future. My touchstone, whether it comes to tax or other policy, policy issues is this: How will we leave the world a better place for the next generation? Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Randy?
Well, I love Hudson, and my passion often shows, whether it's one issue on the water or the FIPS, or this, or that, or just people in general, compassion, communication, and just knowing that we all have differing opinions, and that we all need to work together to find a common sense solution to whatever Hudson has going forward. If we can work together, there's nothing that we can't do. And I really, I respect everybody here, I respect people for throwing their hats in the rings and being vocal about what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong. And that's the only way we're going to correct things, is if we don't hear about it. So it's open communication, and it's about being passionate about what you believe in, and Hudson is what we all believe in. I'm experienced in leadership, bar none, about the city, the history of the city, and how to move it forward in a gentle manner, controlled growth, and keeping our residents safe, and watching, keeping a watchful eye on, on their tax dollars. So if you're in District One, I am humbled by the years that you have kept me in office, and I'm asking for another two years. So please vote for me April 6th. Randy Morset. Thank you.
Thank you. I thank all of you for participating and stepping up to the plate to do this important work. Again, on behalf of the voters and the Chamber of Commerce, thank you very much for participating tonight, and thank you to all of you who have been watching. This program will be broadcast on River Channel YouTube, Hudson River Channel Facebook, or you can check the River Channel schedule for the cable TV playback. And again, I'd like to remind you that there is a map of the city's districts, if you're in doubt of exactly who's who for you, as well as a listing of the polling places that can be found in the, on the City of Hudson website. And please make your voice heard by voting on April 6th. Thanks again, everyone. Good night.